Yes, we're recording.
Intermediation by our office for your guidance as we work as a team to make decisions that are and to best represent them is always keep safe in your hands all of our first responders to keep us safe. For open forum public comment, I have three speakers this evening. I know that some statements, so it's Tony Clark, Judy Black, and George Cooper. Is that for the workshop or did you want to speak at the? Our board agrees or will hold this until the workshop. Thank you. So council tonight, we have just a couple items on our special call meeting. First up is our contracts and agreements regarding financial purchase of a women in our police department vehicle number forty-seven. That cost us thirty-four thousand two hundred for the vehicle, eleven thousand two hundred. We're laying it with staff, they're meant to school. Council disperation is not a it's not an additional vehicles, the vehicle that we approved for purchase via finance. Earlier we need to share our position to favor that vehicle cash. So that is the request of the staff at this time. Or motion to approve.
Do you approve?
Okay.
Second, councilperson Williams, any discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, we begin voting councilperson David.
Aye.
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 Thank you, council. Next up, other items for consideration tonight, and the main reason for our special call meeting in the authority of Windermere. Inc., this is our RFP twenty-one dash one, representative services for healthy westerns. The attachments, the packet, uh, three twelve Windermere, correct, that's the C H A. I believe we have a former group, President Brad, is that correct?
No, Mayor, he's just here to talk about the project. So the vision that we had previously with the selection of ZHA was process, not the actual firm of ZHA. They followed the process in which the town would normally follow, posting our B M and start the town website, social media sites. They did receive one response, which was the one that they selected through their process prior to. At this time, so that doesn't have any objections for ZHA. We have retained John as given as a third party. Just to work on behalf of the town to make sure again that, you know, every T is crossed and I is dotted to make sure that all the proper procedures that the town would follow in construction.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, any questions?
Uh, so John's going to be paid for out of private funds or out of our?
Town funds.
Um, I had a couple of calls from residents, uh, verification where we are, what this particular vote is. Make sure that everybody knows, we're still going to be doing workshops moving forward. As the general looking like a structure, I think, but we're going to have a workshop.
Correct, yes. Since it's going to be located on town property, site lands and if they do any various renderings or changes to the renderings, which the structure itself is going to affect town council. We have as concerns relative to the taking up the event space, so there's some movement or maybe move back a little bit further to see, don't encourage on that Wednesday for basketball, but that will be moved out of town council.
Yeah, there was a suggestion to possibly stake out at some point. I know where to take that, stake out, so the rest is.
That moment.
All right, thank you. So we'll do that. Obviously, we're going to be mindful of several considerations, but at this point, in interest of getting things kicked off and the collaboration on the way to put actually work this agreement, so I'll give you that motion, council. Make a motion for councilman staff with the motion. Second, I'm sorry, is that councilman David? Thank you very much, sir. Any final questions or concerns at this point? Seeing none, we begin voting with councilperson David.
Aye.
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 Thank you, council. That motion carries. Obviously, I want to take a moment to thank all of the group as well as healthy westerns and town staff. Work on this journey together. I know it's going to be successful. And for anything in terms of communication that we need to work on as we go, pay special attention to all of that. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your time. Council, before we close our special call meeting, we have a good order. Staff. Seeing none, close our special call meeting for ten twenty-five twenty-one at six of seven. Yeah. That is correct. And we will now. Workshop. Great. Now, call to order our October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one town of Windermere, at six of seven. For open forum, for this evening, we have Mr. Tony Clark, Judy Black, and George Cooper. Mr. Clark, would you like to begin?
Yep.
Bill, thank you, sir. Just give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's Tony Clark down on One Way Forest Street. County from total presence. Um, my sweet days today really are, since I've been living there, we've, we've noticed that we're the only, uh, junction on Forest Street, or sorry, it's too much, it doesn't have a stop sign. And what's evident is that the speeding that's going down from Main Street to the stop sign at Butler way exceeds fifty miles an hour. It's just, it's just insane. And we put signs to try and curtail that, and it's worked too. As soon as the signs are taken away, people are sprinting back onto speed now. The main, the main issue there are that there are kids playing on dogs and they cross the streets on a, you know, weekends, mainly. But people walk in their dogs. There's normally quite a few, sometimes a girl at first. Um, and they're all in danger, frankly. And then the dust looks gray as well by these people flying by. It's just absolutely insane. One people walk as well. Yeah, it's not because they're big things. Oh, well, just slow down now, one people. Not the kickoff, but dust, so all being back to get it back. So it's a, it's a real, it's a real frustration. I've challenged their next drivers directly with some success. I've challenged Amazon drivers, I followed the car, followed the normally, Main Street is where they tend to go and be there. Um, I've challenged a few residents. That's always a bit tricky, obviously. Um, we're trying to keep as friendly as possible, just asking them to slow down. Um, and they know where they are as well, and it is regular times, absolutely no question about it. When they get to that stop sign at Butler. Slow down a little bit, but they just carry on, accelerate up that hill. These kids on the left there as well, sometimes play outside. So it's, um, it's pretty, pretty dangerous. Um, the sandy roads as well, I think a lot of people realize this. If you need to brake, no braking distance is available considering if you're on a sandy road, so that dangerous to brake out. And whether I believe there is going to be accidents more than anything, is the cars go flying through the forest straight across Main Street and they don't go. I've seen them on regular basis. So, and there's a couple of girls who drive, it's one girl in particular, I'm not quite sure where she lives. Um, but it's the cars you can see, it's like a little sort of helmet around the side of it. And that car goes at a hell of a speed. I don't know what the building is on, it's not speeding. It's supposed to be at, but she's a regular speeder and she goes straight across forest. Um, I don't really want to down that one more. So if we can get a stop sign like that, I've spoken with the people across the way that pierce us. They're up for that. They don't see it as being a problem. I don't know why it isn't there, because it is a medical thing. Um, I think that'd make a huge difference. That's it.
Thank you. So a couple of quick things just to clarify. So have you reached out to the police department on this yet? Have you spoken to the chief?
I think I mentioned it a while ago. I think I mentioned it, I think I might have written it to the town. I have it sometime. I'm sure I'll be, I'll definitely be trying to put it there. But it should stop works. I mean, if I'm out there doing the yard, for example, or something.
So this is not an unusual challenge that we have here, so very similar to some challenges that we have. We have a bit of a protocol that we utilize to make those decisions and some force multipliers that we use to try to address it. So my suggestion, Robert, we have chief, we have, we have his contact information.
Yeah, we have his email account. We do have a process that we follow as far as requesting a stop sign allocation. So we do use it with the, um, stealth speed out there. And then also we have E O U out there as well as our engineers. Because you need an engineering study to justify radiation and enforcement. So we can go ahead and offer our app based on comments tonight and then go from there. We'll make sure we stay in contact with Mr. Clark.
That is good. So, and we do this because it's a requirement of statute. You can't just pop up a stop sign sit there. This gives us what we need in a month to hopefully explain what we can do in the eighth or number two to give us a big footing in it. If the situation warrants, we can analyze.
Well, it is, I'd sooner expect for me.
No, no, I'm glad you're here. And this is how the ball begins to, so we appreciate you coming here and talking about this. Speaking of, you know, exactly how this chief can be in touch with you. Thank you, sir. It's Judy Black.
Hello. I'm Judy Black. I live at four oh five Rested Street Avenue. And I was here to talk about the boat. Thirty-five years ago, a few residents campaigned to tear down boathouses they viewed as high school. Boathouse owners resisted, and then the town sued them. The settlement was a lease agreement which boathouses owners viewed as the only option to protect their rights. This lease was renewed over the years, and so the latest term expired in two thousand and one. If you went to the town inquiring about boathouses and were told they were leased, you were misinformed. The boathouses were owned, repairing rights to access them with lease. The town manager can attest to the fact that for at least seven years, he was of the mindset that the lease would not be renewed again. He said at the end of the term, the boathouses were coming down. He's been faced with a lot of cleaning up in his tenure, so perhaps he felt that this was another thing to get done. He was relying on section twelve surrender of premises which stays. At the end of the term, Leslie will surrender ownership and possession with the right to remove lumber, building materials, boat boys, and fixtures. In other words, take whatever is yours and will remove the rest. Fortunately, the final decision rests with you, the town council. I recognize you're in a difficult position. Motives and intentions have changed. The boathouses have been listed on historic registry. Rather than tearing down ice swords, we are addressing things like appreciating, protecting, preserving a piece of history, giving more residents a chance to enjoy and participate. All good things, things private individuals have done for one hundred years. I myself own a boathouse in the eighties. I acquired it from Ken Barley and sold it to John Santucci, who sold it to Sandy Blackstone, who sold it to the priors, who sold it to the gentruries, who own the property today. This is only one of five boathouses that have changed hands many times. Among the long list of owners, some serve as mayor, town manager, town council members. The only requirement of ownership was to be a willing new president. I doubt to see how having a talented initiative to boathouses can result in any more fairness or opportunity. I dislike taking private owned property without a very good reason. I think the adjacent property owners should have a voice as they would in any other request for a business operation near or adjacent to their property. I'm extremely uncomfortable with the idea that the boathouses will be in better hands if the town owns them. It's time to leave the boathouse owners alone, remove the threat of seizure, lease them, repair your rights if you must, even though all of the public can cross the same piece of land at no charge. They will then, then be free to improve and maintain the boathouses, as the guidance of the womeners of the town historic board. I personally applaud about boathouse owners is because of them, the boathouses are here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. George Cooper.
George Cooper, for Obama's third area. Been in front of you guys a lot, you probably haven't heard me. Um, but for the last many months, I've tried to, um, send a lot of communications that presented a lot of facts, a lot of, um, comments, if you will, a lot of history, all kinds of things to, um, in the hopes of getting the best decision out of this that we possibly can. Um, when I and the current go as owners, preferences, it appeared that we were not going to get those to under tuition. We took a, uh, another turn and decided to negotiate with y'all and, um, we've been doing that. Councilmember Martini and I have been doing that for a couple of months now. And, um, I think that got us pretty far. It's not something we owners would like, but we, most agree with already, the ones that I hold, I hold all of them, can live with it. So I guess my request is, don't give up. As I say, you used to say on TV, pull amongst yourselves. And that's what this workshop is for tonight, so you all can work out the issues that you might have with whatever we're doing and then hopefully create reasoning. Thanks.
Thank you, George.
Here we do have one other host because I came in. I would just like to make a few statements before we get into a long discussion.
That's fine. Once you're at the voting, just give us your name and address and then make comment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is. Hi, my name is Scott Miller. This is one four seven eight seven, Big Trace. Um, pretty much I am a scout and I'm working toward my evil. I'm currently doing an evil project here in Windermere, in the schoolhouse right here. I'm planning on building a big path. And I'm starting my fundraising like journey just now. And so I was wondering if there was like, I don't know, a chance I could like receive some help from you guys. I was recommended by Mr. Cooper. They come here, I wasn't really sure, especially you guys, so sorry for like coming in all this stuff again.
Can you tell us just a little bit about your project and how much funding that you're looking for?
Yeah, so obviously, uh, any amount helps. Pretty much it's going to be gravel path. Trying to get materials like gravel, landscape fabric, metal edging. Yeah. And so much of this is going to help me on the workdays, uh, you know, build the path and everything.
And so, and how much funding can you be part of that money?
Okay. Um, so it's, I'm just now starting. Like I said, any amount helps, about one thousand dollars. Roughly one thousand fifty, something like that. I just got my proposal by the board.
Excellent. Minnie, you want to start?
Um, I'm planning the fundraising for the actual project.
So the, the project, yeah, the project approved by.
That's what I was going to ask, is have you presented this to the municipal preservation board?
Yeah, I was talking with Mr. Cooper, my manager, he.
They, they have funds that they can donate to the project through their own revenues, which is, um, the due charges. Um, you know, the town is taking the stance where if we don't give money, we just rent space, like the town hall, and whatnot. But I think they should give me a proper resource for funding this project.
The other thing that we've done is we've utilized social media to help generate funds as well. So that goes amongst the entire town and often you find folks who are very willing to go and participate there. So, um, and once you're ready to go and you get the okay, you're all approved by H P V.
We'll work with Diane to get it out there as far as a donation page. So.
Thank you very much for coming to speak with us.
Thank you for your time. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Council just for processes tonight. Um, the reason I have various information that you do, um, one is requested to see what the lottery process would be, that's what's indicated with the, uh, agenda packet. Um, motions to rescind it were, one was to reconsider the prior, prior motion. Um, we go through that process that was done at the October town council meeting. Um, also, we provided you with a revised purchase line and clean copy of the boathouse leases based on the comments that were made at that last town council. Uh, in addition to that, we have the fair market rental rate study as well, issue of that, but the raises on this.
Great. Thank you, Robert. So I think tonight, instead of our council will do is look to kind of talk our way through some of these processes. Uh, maybe discuss a little bit about what we see as a path goal, because our vote at the last meeting kind of left that pretty, pretty unclear. So at this point, we're going to see what developments have occurred, if any, and then also to kind of talk about how we see this before. As, as we all recall, the vote was a negative vote, three to two. So, and that was for the new revised lease, that was percentage plus. So that, I think I'm going to kick it off to councilperson Martini. You're spending the closest to the motion process, see. Over here at, uh, and you. There we go. I don't why I don't think we'll talk about that. You know, there's, obviously, we've got some options. The motion to rescind process, we can talk about that at the end if necessary. So, let's start. We didn't discuss the lottery process, the leasing process going forward. Person I had no discussion about that. And we haven't had much, we haven't had any discussions since last council meeting for about the reasons, and other which are farthest, but we just, you know, we negotiated. We went over every single point in this lease multiple times and got to that level, so. Air and reasonable lease. And this is what we voted on last time was the, uh, the new lease as applies to the current boathouse occupants. We didn't discuss, we did discuss, uh, compensation. Unfortunately, that part of the discussion didn't make it into the agenda, so I was kind of surprised to everyone in last council meeting. And so, you know, I'm not, I'm not surprised that it didn't get passed because it might, not my understanding, but my assumption is council wanted to see the whole package, the whole, uh, wanted to see everything before we start splitting things up and voting for certain parts. So, you know, it's understandable. Uh, I would like to, uh, to know what the motion to rescind process is detailed and the reason for that. But at this point, we're still at the same juncture on the lease that we had. And from my understanding, the, everyone is on board, more or less, with the, with the lease part. Uh, the sticking point at this point is the compensation rate for the boathouses, uh, for the current occupants and their their ownership or their occupation. Uh, so that's something very simple. Right now. All right. Thank you, councilperson Martini. I think that the, I mean, I, I hear councilperson Martini is saying, I think I want to verify and make sure that that is the if that is fulfilling that other individuals, council members who voted in the negative towards that, whether it was, uh, a lease renumeration issue or whether it is, um, something entirely different. So we'll clarify that as well, because if you know, Dyson, which direction from. I do have a couple of things to add. My name, Mayor, is a question. We had discussed the lease rates going for, for the full boathouse versus the double boathouses and then just push back on the proposed rate of the double boathouses. And I just wanted to address one of Judy's points about, about the ownership and, and my perspective on the negotiation from the start going forward. Uh, I did wish for, um, you know, some recognition of the boathouse owners. Make sure that, you know, that they were compensated, that some kind of fair, reasonable settlement for this. But my perspective on this, and I spoke to Mr. Fang earlier about this, you know, agreed with me, is that uh, his understanding was that the, at the end of this lease, the boathouses were going to be turned over to the town. And he understood that and he said, they never had a choice. That lease was signed because it was taken or leave it, you know, they're trying, they almost signed that under duress, I guess, um, to avoid, uh, possibly lawsuit. That type of same thing. I said, well, that's, you know, I understand that. However, I can't go back and reargue that argument. I have to take what you signed. And you're understanding what you signed and work forward from there. That's been my perspective all along. I just want to clarify that, that point. Thank you, councilperson Martini. I, I mean, I do think that it's important that, you know, um, always be able to get, I'm going to make sure that everyone's clear that, well, yeah. That the initial lease that's being discussed, um, that lease, one that has the point of termination in the lawsuits, uh, which did not turn out to be a lawsuit because it didn't move further. There was an agreement and it was negotiated out. Currently, that we, that brings us to current lease. Which was, I hear the word duress. I mean, I'm not really crazy about that word because those.
Which was, I hear the word duress, I mean, I'm, I'm not really crazy about that word because those folks also renewed it. You know, us going out to them to renew it, so, um, that would, that would be duress unto yourself, so. You know, I understand, but I just want to clarify that because I think that our intent here is to make something that's clean and transparent. That was the intent of the lease, uh, as well as fair to, to everyone, so, um, that's where I'm coming from. Councilperson Deb, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna follow through with your question, Barry, you know, um, my, my issue with this, and I think I've been pretty, pretty clear about this since you started discussing the boathouses. Is we've kicked a hand down the road for two lease terms. You know, two lease terms ago, um, the boathouses were supposed to, um, transfer ownership back to the town. We renewed the lease term in early, uh, two thousands with the same assumptions. And here we sit today in twenty twenty-one and we haven't solved it. What I don't wanna do is kick the hand down the road another twenty years for the council members that are sitting among, amongst this, uh, room at that point. In addition to that, the renumeration, we never discussed until it came up with the last time. So that was a complete blind side, you know, that, that I felt we needed to have a solution for prior to agreeing to the lease. So those are the two points that, that, you know, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm.
Thank you, Councilperson Deb, that does clear that up. Councilperson David?
Yeah, my biggest thing is, um, the, the current boathouse leases still releasing, I think it's, um, I think that they do, and the lease that would go back to the town, and I think that the rest of the residents of the town should have the opportunity of being able to lease. So my biggest thing is, we, we put on a dollar branch back in July, I felt like it would renewal. And then that came back, they didn't agree to it, and so I think at this point, um, I think you should go back and, uh, leave it to all residents. That's where I think.
Thank you, Councilperson David.
First, please. Um, I, I was hesitant enough last, one was, we did a ton of changes. I really wanted to see it on paper, all the changes, um, the renumeration, it being brought up just as at the last council without any discussion and, and understanding where it's coming from. And then finally, I did have a good feeling, um, rolling into the last town council meeting that all the boathouse owners really had a chance to look at this and kind of give us an acceptance, you know? I didn't wanna go with this blindly, blindly, I talked to one of them, I'd say it's a can't. Um, so at that point, it was like, you know, it's another thirty days, but it was time to just step back just a little bit. I think we could get this thing moving forward because I think it's the right direction, um, because it clears up the ownership issues. And it still gives a little bit, you know, acknowledgement of, of the past, you know, uh, the work that some of these owners put into these boathouses. So that was kind of my, my hesitance last time.
Thank you, Councilperson, it was Councilperson Deb.
Uh, I voted yes, uh, and the reason being was, uh, it catch me off guard, uh, you know, paying out financially or bachelor keys or whatever you wanna, you know, call it, uh, that this twenty year lease was the equivalent of olive branch. Uh, you know, for, you know, during some of the bash workshops, you know, someone put money into it, but it's flat, I believe, or, or financially. But it was one to accomplish once and for all, you know, who the ownership was, and then secondly, if we're gonna go forward with the current tenants, uh, you know, that twenty years was only for them because, you know, so we didn't have to pay out, you know, financially. I'm not sure, going backwards now that we have a vote, uh, to move off of the leases, you know, what any changes are going to accomplish, um. Yes, I, so I'm not sure, you, I, I guess moving into this workshop, I thought we were shifting towards, all right, council is, has voted for across the leases now. Having to go forward to prepare them, give them all up to the same standards and then putting plans in the open.
So I believe that that is certainly a discussion that we're gonna have. I think I wanted to make sure that there was not, wanted to make sure that the council intended to be clear that they did not want to advance the lease and that it was a technical issue or something. It didn't, so, uh, so just wanted to double check intent before we discuss, uh, our other options. And I think there's a little bit of, like, you guys are gonna sit down here in terms of your thoughts that it was your intent to say that this is unexhausted. Stop me from interpreting things correctly. I feel like you were more on the technicality side, I just think, hey, now we're talking. And, and, you know, for me, I certainly have an issue with, you know, there's a whether council feels it's the best for lease option very, very different than moving forward with the renumeration that is going to have to come from tax payer's pockets. To, to boathouse residents that already, I think, have a favorable situation, so. So that was, and that would be difficult for me to explain. Anyone who didn't have a vote, that's kind of my objection to why somebody says that. You know, it is a complex issue, but you have a vote, I've talked with them, I know, um, that this, you know, what I don't like about this is the fact that the rent limits, they need to just come up for, for, uh, you know, every ten years, twenty years. And, you know, just we change it, it's, you know, depending on who's counsel, but he never negotiated after. So, and, and just, I really wanna get out of that, just have a really clean, transparent piece, if that's what we're doing. If that's the direction of the council, so that was that intent, so I was, um, Councilperson Martine, I did not ask for, what's at this point, are or the leases that are part of our.
Well, we never really discussed the, uh, renumeration part, um, intention was to discuss it last council, didn't make it into the agenda, uh, you know, I sent Robert some very brief details about that. And I probably should have called up on that, so I apologize, that, that was my bad, but, um, that's where we left with the negotiations, that, uh, much had a piece structure and awful council, uh, that's not the same, I wanted to bank, I could bank by myself, I spent that kind of money in the town. Um, I did discuss it broadly briefly, and felt that, uh, that's something that the council would need to hear, at least, and discuss. The numbers we were throwing around, uh, you know, either consider it very viable. If a current tenant decided to beat their boathouse and not review, and the current tenant decided to release the boathouse, then the rent would be adjusted for, for the, over the course of a hundred months, which is where buyout would be divided by, uh, a hundred months, which then reduced to the rate, uh, proportion for that particular, uh, boathouse vessel. So that's where we ended up, uh, before the last council meeting. And that's kind of where it's still at, I'm not with it, discussion on many of these points. Has my, my number one goal always has been to make sure the boathouses don't get torn down. I don't think that's, I think we're all agreeing on that, because, uh, you have under the, uh, oodleage of, uh, H P B, and then my second goal is never have to address this issue again. Uh, and I think the only way to do that would be to for the town to have ownership, and that's what we were working towards, however, um, you know, I, I did personally find good point deeds going back to nineteen seventy-two in Orange County records. You know, there is a, there is a chain of ownership, probably at least fifty years that I've had. And so that's why I thought, you know, there should be some compensation for that token, as it may be. A lot of work for some, some ability to come to a fair, reasonable conclusion. And then forward, never have to talk about this again, so.
Thank you, Councilperson Martine. I mean, you want to be clear as well that while there have been times in history that there has been a lot of emphasis on, on actually tearing down the boathouses, that has not been any discussion of this council, so for that, make sure that, that is clear.
Mayor, I can interrupt real quick, just for the motions to rescind process. Now that council has had a chance to see the changes that were discussed within the lease, is there any council member that is willing to, I'm gonna make sure this is proper, um, willing to amend their vote based on knowledge that they received from that meeting? Because the discussion was about the lease, not renumeration. Uh, the motion was specifically for the lease, the cost of the lease, the conditions of the lease. Um, I know council member Williams has stated that he wanted to see it in writing, wanted to make sure that the tenants had opportunity to review it in writing, they now have that opportunity to do it. So is there anyone on council that voted, changed their vote now that they have seen what those conditions are? Got the non-legal, that, yes, that isn't proper for me to say that.
Is, let's, let's, uh, let's clarify that for. I also would like to clarify whether we were talking, you know, the lease or whatever we were talking about.
Okay.
I'm curious.
So, yes, I, I think there was clarification there, when, before the vote, um, by the council member David or David about the fact that we're voting on a lease for the current boathouse tenants. I think that was the clarification that was made last time. Um, and I, what, what Robert just said, the council can change a vote. There is a process, you have a Robert rules of order that you follow, and that went through Robert rules of order, found the process, I think that works. But I think that that's what the council was looking at last time, yes, Martine?
Um, the, is the council able to change the vote if further actions taken on the item after the initial vote was taken? My understanding that we could, uh.
So what Robert rules of order says, if there's action that's been taken that can't be undone, then no. So if you would have signed up new tenants perhaps, then oh, you can't just, you know, reasons.
But we won't, if we altered the lease, or you altered the lease based on the comments that we voted on, correct?
Correct, because the purpose of this lease that I prepared, that we prepared to our own, was not necessarily just for the tenants that are there now. It's for tenants that you might have in the future, or if you're using the lottery process, it's supposed to be a fair lease to bring it up to every day to the tenants. Mayor, can I answer a question?
Well, I think that you did, I mean, you clarified a portion of Robert's, Robert's quarters. But we also, uh, I think, in front of us indirectly is the question, in terms of just the lease itself, whether there would be interest in revisiting that, or whether anyone felt like compelled to. I'm gonna be careful here, so, um.
It's not a change of heart, it's, uh, it's now seeing exactly what the motion was in writing. What she put in the one fifteen, more than three five, yes, the, the, uh, three foot overhang, um, the relinquishing of the, um, items in the boathouses, um, all those conditions that were a part of, uh, council party's motion, the second by council number sap, uh, are within that lease agreement they see in the agreement.
For further more, I, my reflection was, uh, I asked council to repeat all those, uh, items that would be, you know, material changes, uh, correctly, and say he did, and that's what I meant to. That's, that's my, I guess, so the question is, I guess, on that record, is everything here, let's step back and then what we voted on. I see it as the same, but not sure, does it need something else material that sticks out?
In, you know, because we're in workshop city, you have that little conversation, so if you see something that's, uh, it has been, it is an appropriate time to discuss it, but I think the piece in terms of how we move forward is, does any council person see something now that it's in writing that makes that much of a visit?
Yes.
Any additional counsel, see it that way? Any, does it, you're feeling that because it's in writing, because of the renumeration discussion, that it's something that you desire to visit?
Yes.
Mayor, if I, if I meant, one of the things to think that's in this new red line lease, that we didn't talk about putting in just the words, and split, that, that added, that was not in the previous.
Councilmember Martine, I added that because I didn't know how to divide the dual boathouses up, I think, but I don't know, that's something that's.
But, but that has something to do that, that we didn't, we didn't discuss in previous meeting, adding the words, and split, and I understand why it's in there, but.
Correct, I didn't know, like, except how to divide the boathouses.
I don't.
So the consent of council before the, the lease, and then talk about renumeration and such, are subject?
Not sure. It's gone back to ownership. You don't assign the leases.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm sure. But not just for.
You'll need the, you'll need the lease either way. But I understand too, the question is.
But that lease may look different.
Correct.
It seems like there's a sense that it may significantly.
Yes.
So that's what we've got, and I just thought it's part of all.
Right, I did a blank, the length of time based on the vote that occurred last time, assuming that the council was moving forward with it in a different direction.
Ethan?
I have, I have to, I, I just, I got the same. I have the same question that I did last, that is, our approval of this lease, approval of this lease for the current tenants. If the, if that answer is yes, then I, I still have a significant issue with it.
That's what I was trying to say, you did ask.
That's clear, yes, okay. So if we're approving the lease for use by any tenants, I'm okay with it. But if it's specific to the current tenants, you still have significant reservations. Because I, I think we're delaying the inevitable discussion twenty years from now, when we've been having the last thirty years.
And as I pointed out to one of the individual boathouses, I spoke today, because we are running up against the history doesn't become clear, it becomes less clear because those individuals can hold some of this history, and it does become more challenging.
I agree with that, you know, my whole point about a hard reset is to, you know, put that history truly behind us. So we're not talking about this twenty years.
It's maybe twenty years, maybe two years, someone sells their house, we run from the state. Yeah, it could have stayed.
Yeah, it could have stayed. Dramatic. And we're busy to have a great time, I mean, I know that word.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, councilperson David, are your thoughts the same or similar?
Similar, because I just feel like we're going to keep, it's going to keep coming up. So if this is the lease for new leasing in it, and, and, and the waters, if they have the speed current tenants, that's okay with me, but I think we need to, I think we're going to keep writing into this, and we're ever again, and so we, for me, I feel like we need to, you know, kind of settle this, this time, and then just move forward from here.
I would honestly prefer that we have all the factors thought before we go to the vote. As I mentioned, my intention, our intention was to discuss the reparation part in the last council meeting. And, uh, you know, I realize that the information was presented in the last minute, um, according to something that we had discussed in the last minute. And I wasn't comfortable negotiating that without council's approval. So, uh, meeting does have information that was written clearly, so, you know, it's obvious that, um, you know, it's like buying a car, not really know what color, you know, it's, and I'd be happy with it, so, I understand.
Yeah, and your, and your mission, just for clarification, what your mission was, is to negotiate existing boat house leases to come with a lease that can be presented back to the council. That was your, that was your mission, right, you agree?
I agree, yes, I totally agree.
Just to, just to clarify, I'm sure.
I wish.
I'm sorry.
I do have a question on this lease now. This lease isn't leased for access. It's a lease for the building, correct?
It's on some access.
Well, the old lease, well, the old lease was all egress, it was only egress, ingress, egress. This is different, so I'm starting to go, this should clear us up on ownership. Because releasing then the boat house, not access, the access is part of it, but it's the boat house itself.
Well, when would I thought that just leases cleared that out too?
I would have thought so. But the old lease was about just access.
This is much more so than most.
Which raises that all other specter of ownership.
We own.
Not, well, I mean, according to this place.
According to the, and according, according to the last lease.
The old lease expired, so we're now on just one, one.
Right, and, and, and that was my understanding from Mr. Fay's understanding, and it's on the record, spoke here publicly, that his understanding, and he was one of the original last lease twenty years ago, was that at the end of this lease, that ownership of the structure will be turned over to the town.
But Mr. Fay, all of the wood, the lumber, the oak boards, and everything.
Right, there was that clause in the lease about the, the owners being able to take this.
No, not to the ownership of the lease, but ownership of the town.
We, hey Judy, sorry, if, if council wants to speak, no, no, I just, I went on the record, that's all. Sorry, I guess, you know, we have a good job on the microphone there, and we can't put it in minutes, that's all.
Yeah, the deal that wants to see it clearly states in the new lease that the town is the owner of the boat houses. Um, so, again, the motion at the last meeting was to enter into these lease agreements with the current tenants. But again, um, in a way, it can be used for other tenants if you so choose. But to rescind, um, the motion, or reconsider, not reconsider the motion, it would have to be on these terms for the current tenants.
And advertised.
And advertised.
Is that a direction that council desires to go, or do we want to discuss other options? I know where you guys are, I think. Forward?
I want to move forward.
I, I'm just concerned as we get further down, uh, you know, this road, but ownership keeps coming up, and and there is argument, so, you know, the other council members that, uh, the old lease was an attempt to do, you know, what we may do today, was with a hard reset, and, you know, end it, so. I, I guess, as long as, as long as this keeps going on, I'm certainly in that direction, you know, which is really hard to say. And, and I thought that's where we were, and now we're, you know, going to backtrack, I mean, it was for it, it was, it wasn't favorable, you know, after the last meeting. So, I guess, leading up to these next two weeks, you know, my mind is resetted to find out we're going into a different direction.
Okay.
But I guess the frustrating part is the, I mean.
Well, I think then, you know, that, that tells me that three people that are thinking hard resets, and have that frustration, is that factor?
Yeah, I, I guess I've learned a little more about what was enough in this lease to go back and discuss again. I mean, I don't really see too many changes that would make one, you know, switch the opinion.
No, that's fair, I mean, what, what we're looking for is everyone's.
Yeah, if there was a growth, it was designed as a negative, or, you know, but, but, but I feel like everything could be discussed, and the law is table, including, you know, these are the new terms, you know, that we negotiated in front of everybody, and it's going to be with these current leaseholders, it was very clear, and then that's how I, I made my vote, you know, in the beginning, that this lease was solely for those, if it was not going to be with current leaseholders, then we could probably take this lease with slightly different approach, probably just in terms alone, because everything else is hammered down pretty fair and equitable. Lease for anything. Right, you're right. So, so, and, and I guess furthermore, are, you know, I'm still confused, are we now going to add a financial is the payout to the lease is going to be part of the next one that we're going to vote on, or are we still separating them? What is, I guess, what are we looking for if it was on the, if it was on the next one?
To only, well, you could have, so at this workshop, you can ask for anything. It's just a matter of whether there's enough time or not, I don't know, the work that the site has out. But what you're, what we're discussing now in terms of your lees is just the information in front of you. That was discussed at the last council meeting, the intent that this would be the new lease for the current.
Yeah.
That's a, councilman's on T each part, I'm not sure we should look at this lease in standard, man, without renumeration or, or. I've got a significant draw on the three three. Consider that the previous leases have turned over ownership to the boat house to the tenant.
It's going to be. If I'm wrong here, so, while renumeration was discussed at the council meeting, the motion, the renumeration, or, um, or documentation of that, it wasn't discussed. I don't think it impacts this particular lease as it sits for the purposes that we're discussing right now, although it could change as we move forward, based on what I'm hearing.
But I think it affects the intent of Councilman Martini's negotiation with the current boat house owner.
And that very, it could be.
So, you know, I think, in a completely transparent manner, we should look at vote, because it's all part of the package, right?
I agree. We can't vote on this lease tonight anyway, however, uh, and I'm perfectly fine with the lease that we hammered out numerous times. And I, I think that the boat house owners are pretty much, you know, not half, but, you know, accepting a couple of leases itself. In and of itself, however, there's still waiting for us to talk about the side on the other part. And then going back to Judy's point about the previous lease, which when they signed it, gave them the right privilege, whatever, to take that structure with them. And so.
Maybe then, certainly even preserve it.
I know, I'm not saying do that, I don't want to.
No, no, I'm not saying that.
I'm going to break that into my King Solomon parallel here in a second, but, uh, the, but when the, when the town would put structures on the historical registry, it took away that opportunity for, whatever you're going to call it, for the boat house owners to take. I don't even know if it's worth it to, cost you more to take one of those things down, and, you know, to, the, the numbers weren't, although, you know, pretty expensive these days. But, you know, that was partly give and take on our discussion about reparation. They can't, you know, they had some, now some in the historic register, and they can't, so they can't have it. So, you know, that was one of the smaller parts of it. You know, notwithstanding the the fact that these structures have changed hands, they're safe with the property owners. And one of the, one of the questions I think came up on email was, you know, Carl Patterson quote said that these boat houses were connected to actual regular houses, but I don't think they are, I mean, connected to the same owners, and very often they change hands. Somebody sold their house, and they had a boat house, well, the new owner bought both. They are listed as separate structures, aren't kind of private, razor sight, they're not linked to individual homes in town. So there is, there is a separation there, um, so.
Um, you know, I still have, the town historical designation is, you know, a little, it gets to wherever actually led to the town going. And number two, there's a house that used to be across from these boat houses that was attached to these boat houses that is no longer there, that was also on that historical list.
Council did actually vote on, on, put that on, on page five of that documentation that I shared with that, that agenda, or that minutes from that meeting, uh, I forget what the name is, but they actually did vote, they postponed the vote, and they got back to it, so it was actually put on.
It was a council meeting, uh, to me, uh, is that major, is that, oh, I think it was, it's part of.
It was part of the minutes and documents that provided within the, uh, packet, as far as it being in the local registry. Um, and I guess, uh, certificate of appropriateness for the removal of the, um, house that was there, went to HDP. Um, I can't independently confirm that, but I, I think that's what the argument is.
Yeah.
But regardless of that, again, the contents of what's in the lease discussed as far as the one fifteen month, the one twenty five month. Um, and if, as far as renumeration, it seems like there's various varying opinions on that. So if we can just have a quick discussion, and maybe a whole of the council, who would be bigger, including renumeration, which would be payment to the boat house tenants, for what they believe the boat houses are worth, as Councilman Sapp has stated, um, you know, pay for keys.
Or an adjustment in rent, possibly going forward, uh. Two parts of the renumeration discussion, we had, one was if the, if the current leasing size not forward, that there will be a cash buyout of X dollars. If they decide to move forward, that same amount, whatever that amount is per structure, uh, uh, would be divided out, and, and it's all slightly lower, horses lower, lease rates going forward. Uh, that's as far as we got, it really, it was some discussion about the double boat house owners, um, being compensated twice, or not twice, but a double rate, singles, but.
Skills, another figure, so, was there a figure thrown out? Oh, that was a big accident, can we ask this? What are those of the boat houses?
Hundred five thousand, first, first structure.
And if you spread it out over how many months?
Hundred months.
So fifty bucks, discount.
Eight point, eight point three years.
So, discount of fifty bucks a month, okay. So we're not talking a whole lot of money, discount, if we win that, right?
And it's not money at heart, in town either. And, and still, at seventy five dollars a month, still, or a hundred dollars, still, you know.
Then we start talking about the current lease.
Yes.
If we could have.
And you're taking on maintenance and stuff.
Right, the, uh, the major, which, well, reality, we could have it, because of the current let's see, if the truth fell, the current let's see, said, I'm not paying eight thousand dollars, five thousand, six, three, just cancel the contract. We said, and, you know, they can't say anytime, I can see, you know, visible person agreeing to pay five or eight thousand dollars to fix a roof. And we're going to, you know, tell them, and they're doing maintenance, that's some of the that really got into them, that's the basis of being sure.
Is that the church environment?
At least I'm going to cover.
For the tenants, yeah, exactly.
Okay, sorry, I have a guess.
And you can, it's hard to impossible ensure.
After we move on to structure.
Five thousand, are you?
If we spread it out over a hundred months, absolutely, it's fifty bucks.
Chris, we can just talk about it along with the lease.
Yeah.
Now, I, you know, want to, whether it's a discount or not, I don't count all the taxpayers, but, so that, uh, still, whether it's a discount or money paid in one check, it's still paid by the town. Secondly, I can't see how it's fair enough with the voters, I mean, some of the boat owners have applied by lease and pet demands, but for others, not, so. I think, I know part of the reasoning was, well, I don't know if it's going to be ever due or not, but it's still a return, you know, deeds, uh, that is. But, you know, if I'm just there paying to keep my boat house up, um, and get five thousand, uh, here, simply get five thousand.
That's person Markey. Limerick.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, which I think is one exception, most of the boat house owners have kept up their structures. They have maintained them, and they put money into them, and they bought them, you would say, but I don't know if bought is the correct term, you know, the transfer with, uh, with money deeds and whatnot, and the other, uh, as far as the double boat houses, you know, my argument is, those co-owners pay half, each paid half structure, so, you know. We're talking about the five thousand dollars per structure. Um, and the argument is, going forward, we could double leasing up two slips, and so we should get compensated for two. Now, speaking of Mr. Fay, wrote here today, he, that the mindset, and maybe rightly, frankly, so the previous lease was strictly for access from the town to structures that he owned. Previous lease was not, uh, that he was paying half of, and his brother was paying half of, had nothing to do with the value of the structure itself, so, I mean, it's kind of a valid point, is that they do have a one point eight, you know, their boat house, you know, one point eight or one point six times the revenue producing slips than a single boat house, so. But I, I honestly, I don't have an issue with some type of compensation, be it, you know, produced rent or outright purchase. Uh, I would want to say, if I had, you know, maintained the structure and, uh, put that kind of thing into it. Just to use an example, you know, my company, this is across the street, uh, but I have to maintain these, I have to keep it painted, I have to take care of all the day-to-day bills, uh, on move out, or something of that nature, I don't expect compensation. But you didn't buy it, and your lease is not just an access, again, I guess, for certain.
Again, I guess we're certain we'll have to be, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, 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 you know, and that's my concern as the argument is further, further.
Yeah.
That's what's been in our emails, you know, we had an agreement on key service. We thought so, but then it's backtrack back to the ownership, so we just keep coming back to square one. And, and, and I'm getting highly concerned at this point because of that, that would be back to square one. Here's the now, um, because I think there was a tent, you know, by the last lease, you know, whether they take the stuff with them or whatever, but the lease put in and everybody put it on. Uh, but I think there was a town, just file branches and such, and for some of the work that was put into the boat houses and some people that owned the conquered and others, so and so forth. Why did someone release that was proposed, uh, you know, a couple of steps on that.
I wanna clarify, I said I was up for the re-creation, only is the discount. There's no, no catchout. Keep it fine, you're getting a good deal, you can get a discount over, you know, a hundred months on, but that's the only way. That way we're not coming out of the pocket.
Right. One of the things you talked about that I proposed was that it's not transfer. So.
Correct.
It's, we're not transferring to new, and, but, you know, if we're renewing these leases in twenty years and, and a hundred months, maybe eight, nine years, it's less than half at least there. So that is another all branch, you know, we've extended several to try, uh, or, or talk about several to try to work this out. And I think we're gonna come to some conclusion, uh, that's most, be happy with that.
Yeah, re-creation question.
I have a question.
Oh, it's fine. Either payback, I think that's.
Counselor Murphy.
I agree, no, because I think the residents that, you know, never had access or coming to, you know, either way, it's still a company. And I think the question is they.
Yes.
So council members, I suppose, remember as well.
Correct.
On the other.
Correct. All right.
Still.
That leads us back to. Basically, you're talking about just lease, not the re-creation. That would be the basis for potential for this same lease to come back at the next council meeting. Should, uh, that would be, it's like you have three council people are amenable to see some on the next council meeting. Three that are not amenable to the re-creation discussion. That some of the intent of these portion of this conversation. Back here now.
I just.
They didn't release the current.
Yeah, they. The, the unfortunate restructuring decision, um, would be the one that Councilmember Martini made.
Correct.
And Sapp, uh, seconded, which includes all the, um, language that's in the lease agreement for you tonight for the current tenants. Um, which does not include any re-creation, um, is just basically here's the twenty year lease. Um, so if there are three council members that are okay with this lease as written, then we could go through that process. If there's not three, then we are back to, you know, then do we just go ahead and enter or do we lotto? You know, whatever process you come up with.
Yes, all right, so. It's my understanding that we have three who desire have the lease as amended, heard the motion. Current lease holders, no re-creation on our next agenda. Is that accurate? I don't know. Okay, that's okay, man, that's, you gotta know, that's, I'm not trying to bleed on pride. I just wanna make sure that, you know, clear direction for staff. Otherwise, I don't want to remove these things.
Yeah, the reason, I, I think I already said, and I'll try to clarify again. So we're voting on the same exact thing that we did two weeks ago. There's, there's really no difference. I guess my, my concern is, it's, and that's where I'm starting to waffle, you know, that is. I just, I, I don't, I don't know if we're, you know, accomplishing what we tried to accomplish, uh, you know, when we started this back in November, uh, just probably, you know, five million of that, because there's still, I'm sorry to do it. There's still, I, I've not heard anybody, uh, any current, uh, tenants, you know, reach out and say, I want to sign the lease. It's all in regards to ownership, so we still don't put that in bed. I'm not sure now, but we have this discussion, this puts it in the bag, even though it's set in, because there's been some of that wording in previous leases, so. You know, that's why I asked before if there's, you know, any deeds or, you know, or any other way or instrument to be able to be a little bit more clear than, you know, just the lease, uh, without going another route, which would be, uh, you know, ruling by a third party, which would be a court system, which started the process back in the early eighties, uh, when as far as, uh, the, uh, counterclaim by defendants being dispensed by Mr. Danny, and then after that dismissal, there was maybe lots of conditions of this rest of the lease. Which is what it's been done for thirty five years since. But it's that, like. So I, I, I was confident that we had an agreement, the, the boat house tenants were on board with this and, you know, there's clarity of ownership and all that, but I'm not sure, I haven't seen clarity now that everybody's on the same page. And so that's my hesitation, but.
That's fair.
Okay.
Counselor Murphy.
I just had a quick question for counselor. So we would have to rescind this vote, re-vote on it again because we cannot, and, and, but the issue is, isn't with Robert's rules of order? That if you vote on the same thing, you have, you have to vote the same way that you had before? Am I correct?
Not with the motions we send, you know, everyone, it's in the bullet points. So regardless of how you voted the first time, if you wanna vote to undo it, then you can vote the second time. If you get the majority vote to undo, reset.
But if we're voting on the exact same thing, I, I thought that vote had to be the same if we're voting on the same thing. Okay. I'll get out my laminated trifold, Robert's rules of order for that, he said, check.
Maybe, maybe, um, there is a different interpretation of that, but not, that wasn't my meaning when we said.
All right. And I believe that's why the process is spelled out with, with the actual public notice and it's also set up, so, you know, you gotta go back, you gotta, you just square people out, right? I mean, that's how the intent, the intent here is say, okay, here's, here it is in writing. It looks different to us, or I'm more comfortable with it, or I'm less comfortable with it than I was in the stat later. At the council meeting.
So your staff clarification based on the conversations, that is not an option that we're looking to consider on Monday?
That is what it appears to be, it appears to me that the three council people are amenable to visiting eyes decently next week. I probably need some, no, you're right.
I, I guess my problem is it is being revised, it's the same as the next lease. I mean, it's technically there's red lines, but they were, you know, red lines discussed and say where it's from, those are. But I, I just feel like, why can't say, I hate to waste time in two weeks and I go one direction or another. But I still hold it on the spot, like, here, the mindset, or because of going a different direction. And I know that was in there that we discussed, uh, uh, you know, exchange of open everything, but, uh, again, it's because of some material change in the lease agreement, I would say, I said to you before, on, you know, how to be seen with not renew the lease and go in the waters, whatever they need, but.
And I see it differently only because we made all the changes. And this is supposed to be negotiated, this. The other part is didn't have any say in that, at that moment. Because we have one out of five here to discuss it, and one of them that was here hadn't even seen the original version.
But isn't that why we sent representatives to be able to represent it? I mean, I can't.
I, I know.
That is, uh, I'm not exactly sure how, how that, or if that did occur, but.
I mean, we made changes to it without any kind of negotiation, uh, we added to it.
A bit of large, so it's just material, uh, and we could be present, everything without the evidence on. The appraisal came in, there were negotiations, you know, since the appraisal, so the president come in and then the meeting rights of council. I, I, I just, and maybe getting in our standup, what I'm here is a, a, you know, material change where I guess they'll show that.
I would say, I would say this is the first crack that we've had at lease, but this is the at least that, that didn't go, okay? And we sent, and the reason, the whole reason that we didn't send, doesn't mean we're sending this out, to negotiate these. They were charged for that, right? Okay, they did that. Come back to our last meeting. Discuss those changes, discuss the revised lease, made a motion, doesn't appear. And I don't, I don't know that we get to continue to revisit it over and over unless there's an indifference or, I mean, you've already got enough people to say, yeah, I feel like we need to bring it back to revisit everything, because it's named lease holders. That's what I'm not seeing here. I am not seeing, I'm not even, desire not to see that, but everyone's, that.
I, I didn't get to see emails or, or reach out, maybe about the talks, you know, I was mentioned, but it was all about the ownership. Which I thought, or anything that's been, the rest, but it's clear that not everybody is on the same page. But again, that was part of the process that we, that shouldn't have done, like, you know, seats, but Martini just represented on that side, so to hash it out, then, this again. Lot more negotiations at the last meeting, but, but, you know, there are some teams that got a problem. Again, unless there's something actually asked over that would be seen as, you know, material facing.
You don't feel that way at this time.
And I'm gonna, you know, vote for that.
Right.
For it, so, you know, everything's already gone now, this is trying to, you know, just trying to argue.
And my question here now is not to clear it down, whatever, I'm asking you is I just wanna make sure that we're clear.
Right.
And that I'm reading, reading your thoughts correctly, so we make the right decision.
No, I think, I, I, I still see that.
So as we sit here tonight, I think we have the support to bring it back to the next meeting. It's, like I said, unless someone's gonna tell me right now that, that they're changing their minds.
And so the leases presented conceptually, um, would then be through the lottery system?
I believe that it would be.
Or, or a process as determined by townhouse.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do at this point is we can, we can either workshop that issue right now or we can workshop that at another time, you develop that process. And this list could be appropriate for that with some minor tweaks. I'm guessing it would be, but we may want to make sure we're for a different setting. Or different purpose.
We'll continue the one-to-one until that process and or we leases are determined?
I would amenable to that. Any, any, I'm not amenable to continuing them on the month until we develop the process.
So the next step will be a workshop on the process and then go from there. Since it's in agreement, just the term, not the terms, is the one thing that would be under consideration.
Right. All right, so we can.
Well, just to clarify, the process you're referring to is the process to reallocate the boat houses?
Yes, to all the places.
Have we gotten to that point as a council yet? I mean. Right, I mean, is, is, has everybody got an order that we're gonna reallocate boat houses? And then some system in the next step is to develop that system?
That was my understanding.
I believe that if you don't have leased current boat house, these orders, you cannot. There's not another path forward other than you even thinking, you reallocate them or you think them, but and, and it's in council's direction, opposite movement, so that leaves you with another couple of options. And those are the ones that we need to discuss and make sure that we develop a process that is, uh, fair and equitable.
I, I agree here, but I.
You need to be very clear and transparent.
I understand.
Where were going from this back?
We don't have, we don't have the votes to approve this lease as presented. Whatever reason, so that be product on the next step.
That's correct.
Lines change in the next two weeks, so, uh. We're not working this.
Well, you can't, and you're not gonna vote tonight, and you're not gonna vote, won't see this on the next agenda unless, and unless there's a difference in, in what we're hearing here tonight, uh, and then we enact the wish to present or, or that process you're presenting bills to present, uh, through Robert's words, maybe.
So, no, sorry.
If, if you, only if you want to see this on the next council meeting.
Yeah, there's actually two processes that you can, you would notice. Or someone could bring it up, a council member could bring it up at the next meeting, then they make super majority.
Super majority. Did that happen once in the history of council, why was it called? Yes, all right. So that is the direction to staff, Robert, at this point. Council, we can extend our meeting tonight and discuss options or we can, uh, in terms of the process or we can set another, uh, presentation, like, uh, workshop, get some public input and, and forward on that, and that's probably the best path forward on something like this.
I, I, I have a full transparency report. If I look into that process.
Anything additional from council at this point? Any additional from staff? None, I will adjourn our workshop at seven twenty seven P M.